Good morning, everyone. I'm Lisa Bender. I'm the president of the Minneapolis City Council. Today, before we start our official meeting, we have two honorary resolutions. And we often pause before our official business to recognize important issues or members of our community. And so today, we'll start off by recognizing September as Hunger Action Month. And so I'll read the resolution and then turn it over to our guests to talk a little bit about the work that Second Harvest Heartland is doing. Whereas hunger and poverty are issues of grave concern in the United States, the state of Minnesota, and the city of Minneapolis; and whereas the city of Minneapolis is committed to taking steps to raise awareness about the need to combat hunger in every part of our city and provide additional resources that citizens of Minneapolis need; and whereas the city of Minneapolis is committed to working with Second Harvest Heartland in educating people about the role and importance of food banks in addressing hunger and raising awareness of the need to devote more resources and attention to hunger issues; and whereas more than 1 in 11 individuals in Minnesota rely on food provided by Second Harvest Heartland and Minnesota's Feeding America Food Banks annually; and whereas Second Harvest Heartland distributed more than 81 million meals in 2017 through its network of food shelves, pantries, and other partner programs; and whereas food banks across the country, including Second Harvest Heartland, will host numerous events throughout the month of September to bring awareness and attention to encourage involvement in efforts to end hunger in their local community; now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and the city council do hereby recognize September as Hunger Action Month in our city of Minneapolis. So thank you so much for being here. I'll present this to you and would love to turn it over to you if you'd like to talk a bit more about the month of September.
Absolutely. Well, thank you so much, President Bender, and to the Minneapolis City Council for passing this proclamation, September as Hunger Action Month. As President Bender said, 1 in 11 Minnesotans experience hunger on any given day. And so, you know, hunger is all across the country, but it's right here in our city. And this resolution shows incredible support for the work that Second Harvest is doing. We're much better together than we are alone. And so we just want to say thank you so much. In September, we'll be hosting events throughout the month. We have a special volunteer match. If you've ever volunteered with Second Harvest, thanks to Bremmer Bank. And of course, social media. We know how influential that is in spreading the word. So if you are on social media, just spread the word about Hunger Action Month. We have Twin Cities landmarks who will be going orange on September 13th, which is Hunger Action Day. So you'll see the cities ablaze in orange, and that's just another point to raise awareness on hunger in our community. So on behalf of all of Second Harvest, thank you for this important step in raising awareness. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. And then now we'll have Councilmember Schrader join me for our second resolution.
So I'm Jeremy Schrader, a council member for Ward 11, and I'm honored today to present this resolution on the Building and Code Officials Appreciation Day. So I'll read the resolution and then turn it over to Steve Port to say a couple words as well. So whereas the city of Minneapolis is committed to the responsible development and in that regard recognizes its duty to provide for and protect the health, safety, common welfare of all of its residents through the enforcement of building, zoning, environmental controls, and similar codes and regulations; and whereas Minneapolis has benefited from a system of code enforcement and compliance initiatives that have resulted in a robust and growing local economy, as reflected in all the work provided by plan reviewers, inspectors, program administrators, who work as a team under the leadership of the city's former building official, Pat Higgins, and now under the new building official, Kenneth Stallow, with a singular focus to ensure that the vitality and livability of the built environment of the city of Minneapolis is of the highest quality; and whereas the competence and the structural integrity of buildings, public infrastructure, and other assets which constitute the civic platform on which the city operates is achieved through the commitment and professional expertise of a cadre of building and code enforcement officials; and whereas those city officials collaborate with highly skilled and dedicated developers, architects, builders, designers, tradespeople in the construction industry with the common goal of ensuring the safe and responsible design, construction, and operation of buildings in Minneapolis; and whereas the building and code enforcement officials are members of the International Code Council, a U.S.-based organization which unites local, state, federal officials with the expertise in the built environment to create and implement the highest quality codes to protect communities across the nation in the building where we live, learn, work, worship, and play; now therefore be it resolved that Friday, August 31st, 2018, is hereby declared Building and Codes Officials Appreciation Day in grateful recognition of the city's professional building and code enforcement officials, who play a critical role in ensuring for the safety, the efficient, and livable quality of life that is essential to a strong, prosperous, growing city of Minneapolis. I'm very excited to present this. I think the only thing I would add, it's just been an honor working with the planning and zoning staff. They are very much committed to this important work. And what I think is said in this but doesn't come out in common words is, these are the people that make home possible, that make community possible, that make living and safe affordable, and make our city what it is. So my appreciation goes out.
Council President Bender, Councilmember Schrader, and the mayor's office, thank you very much. And also thanks to the city clerk for giving us this opportunity at council today. I just wanted to say it's been a great honor to work with the city council on all the development in the last few years. As everybody knows, we've been on seven years of dramatic construction. Last year, we did $1.495 billion with the construction. We issued about 38,000 permits, about 11,500 were building permits. We conducted about 78,000 inspections on those permits. And one of the things that hallmarks our work is a lack of catastrophic failure. So it's kind of, you know, it's hard to prove a negative, but I think when you look around, we don't see buildings collapsing. We don't see tragic accidents at construction sites. It's extremely rare that we have events at all. And I think that really is indicative and the hallmark of the work that the construction code services people do. I want to acknowledge we also work closely with the fire inspection services on plan reviews. We work with our partners in housing inspection around certificates of occupancy. And we do partner with the state electrical people, which maybe someday would be a little closer to home. But we just are a great honor to be here and be acknowledged for all the work. I just want to acknowledge Pat Higgins retired last week. He is currently convalescing. He had to have some minor surgery on his shoulder, otherwise he'd be here today. And Kenny Stallow, our new building official, has been with the city for 28 years. He started in Public Works. He's been in the construction code services for 20 years. He's been a supervisor. He supervised the North Side building inspectors for about, since 2014. And he has been on the International Code Commission for 10 years. So we are represented at the state level and at the international level on these advisory boards, and that's a great honor. We've had, Pat Higgins served on the governor's board, actually, as an advisory. So Minneapolis has recognized us having very competent staff, and it's been a great honor. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just will note, you know, we've had this huge uptick in building that we keep expecting to slow down, and it doesn't. It keeps growing year by year. And I just want to issue my thanks to the staff who are doing so much more with not a lot of extra capacity. We haven't added a lot of extra staff, and we started to see billion dollars' worth of construction permits year by year. So I just really appreciate all the work that you've done in your leadership and supporting your staff. I think you really stand out as a leader in our city that is so supportive of staff. And I know the folks who work for you appreciate your leadership. So thank you. With that, good morning again. I'm Lisa Bender, the president of the Minneapolis City Council. I will call to order our regular meeting of August 31st, 2018, and ask the clerk to please call the roll. Councilmember Reich.
Here.
Fletcher.
Here.
Jenkins.
Here.
Schrader.
Here.
Worsami.
Present.
Cunningham.
Present.
Ellison.
Present.
Goodman.
Present.
Johnson.
Here.
Paul Masano.
Present.
Gordon.
Here.
Kano.
Here.
President Bender.
Here.
There are 13 members present. Let the record reflect that we have a quorum. With that, we'll proceed to the meeting agenda. We have one amendment at our desk this morning, which is the addition of a resolution for the fire department's participation in Fill the Boot campaign fundraiser for the Muscular Dystrophy Association, brought forward by Councilmember Johnson. Are there other further amendments to add to the agenda? Seeing none, I'll recognize the vice president for a motion to approve the agenda as amended. Is there a motion?
So moved.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That carries, and the agenda is adopted as amended. And next, we have the minutes from our adjourned meeting on August 15th, as well as our regular meeting on August 17th for acceptance. I'll ask for a motion to accept those minutes.
So moved. Second.
All in approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries, and the minutes are accepted. And finally, we have the referral of petitions, communications, and reports to proper committees. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
All in approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries, and those referrals are made. The next order of business is reports from our standing committees, beginning with the Economic Development and Regulatory Services Committee, presented by the vice chair, Councilmember Ellison.
Thank you, President Bender. The Economic Development and Regulatory Services Committee has 11 items to bring forward. They are, number one is the East Side Neighborhood Services Bond Issuance for its facilities at 1700 Second Street Northeast for 501(c)(3) bonds. Number two is the Avivo, formerly known as Resource, bond issuance for 1810 and 1820 Columbus Avenue South. Number three is Elliott Park Hotel, on-sale liquor license and Sunday sales. Number four is Mixed Blood Theater, on-sale wine and strong beer license. Number five is another bond issuance for Fairview Health Services. Number six, I'm going to move to delete. It was a license revocation because of failure to pay taxes, but they have since last minute paid their taxes. Item number seven is the liquor license approvals. Item number eight is general license renewals. Item number nine is gambling license approvals. Item number 10 is gambling license renewals. And item number 11 is exclusive development rights for ACOM for 800 Washington Avenue South. So I will move to approve all 11 items except item number six. I will move to delete.
Councilmember Ellison has moved the committee report, including that deletion. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll. Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Paul Masano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes. That carries, and the report is adopted. Next, we have the report of the Housing Policy and Development Committee, presented by the chair councilmember Gordon.
Thank you, Council President Bender. The Housing Policy and Development Committee is bringing forward six items for consideration. The first is our 2017 report to the federal government, HUD, on our consolidated annual performance evaluations. This has to do with our community development block grants, home investment partnerships, emergency solutions, and our housing opportunities for persons with AIDS. Second item is approving contracts with Neighbor Works Home Partners and Build Wealth Minnesota to provide lending administration services for our homeownership opportunity Minneapolis program. Third item is establishment of a new Minneapolis small and medium multifamily loan program. Fourth item is approving revisions to our program guidelines for the Minneapolis NOAA Preservation Fund. The fifth item is approving modifications to our Minneapolis Homes program. And the final item, we received a report from our consultants on inclusionary housing, and there are three staff directions that will tee up work for us in the future. I will move the full report forward.
Councilmember Gordon has moved the HPD report. Is there any discussion? I will add myself. I just wanted to comment briefly on the inclusionary zoning presentation. I've been working on this ordinance for a few years. I just wanted to offer an update to those who are not on the committee, that this was a report from consultants who did an economic analysis of our housing market and made some policy recommendations for us to consider about how we would incorporate inclusionary or mixed income housing requirements into new market rate developments in the city. Their final report will be completed, a written report, in a couple of weeks. And after that, myself and staff and the other councilmembers who've been working on this would be happy to meet with folks who have questions or want to get more involved before we have staff bring us a final policy to consider in November. One piece of that would be a temporary solution that would come after we would adopt our comprehensive plan at the end of this year. And then they'll also bring recommendations for a longer-term policy that would likely include some city funding that won't be ready to go at the beginning of next year. So a short way to say that is, happy to talk with anyone more about this, and this action was just an update from staff. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll. Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Paul Masano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes. That carries, and the report is adopted. Next, we have the report from our Public Health, Environment, Civil Rights, and Engagement Committee, presented by the chair councilmember Cunningham.
Thank you, Madam President. The Public Health, Environment, Civil Rights, and Engagement Committee brings forward four items this week. The first is amending a previous council action to reflect an updated grant dollar amount for youth mental health services at the school-based clinics. The second is accepting a grant from the Minnesota Department of Human Services to have a school-based clinic clinician training in the fall. Number three is authorizing a site agreement with AmeriCorps to host one year a Minnesota Opioid Response Corps member. And the fourth item is authorizing the sustainability manager and the city attorney on behalf of the city to join any state or national coalitions of government entities to defend the 2016 clean car standards. I move approval of these items.
Councilmember Cunningham has moved the committee report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll. Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Paul Masano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes. That carries, and the report is adopted. The next report is from the Public Safety and Emergency Management Committee, chaired by Councilmember Kano.
Sorry about that. Well, the Public Safety has five items moving forward today. And I shall go ahead and read those. One minute. So item number one is a contract with Bracken's Consulting and Psychological Services for police employee mental health services. Item two is a grant from the Minnesota Department of Public Safety, the Office of Traffic Safety, for a DWI enforcement officer. Item number three is a redistribution of pulse oximeters from the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources to the Minneapolis Police Fire Department, excuse me. Item number four is the Minnesota Board of Firefighter Training and Education Training Academy reimbursement. And item number five is a Minnesota Board of Firefighter Training and Education Training reimbursement redistribution. Those items are being brought forward by our committee. Councilmember Kano has moved the Public Safety and Emergency Management report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Paul Masano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes. That carries, and the report is adopted. Next, we have the report from the Transportation and Public Works Committee, chaired by Councilmember Reich.
Thank you, Madam President. Committee four has 15 items today. Item one is the West Broadway Improvement Special Service District, the operating plan and budget amendments. Item two is the contract amendment with La Medien Sons for Lyndale Avenue Outfall Improvements Project. Item three is the contract amendment with Meyer Contract Incorporated for the Anderson School Improvements Project. Item four is the contract amendment with Kimley-Horn Associates for the additional professional services for the Hennepin Avenue Reconstruction Project. Item five is the contract change with LS Black Culking and Flume Cleaning Services for the Fridley Softening Plant. Item six is the contract with CDM Smith, Industrial Electrical Engineering, Plan and Design for the Fridley Softening Plant. Item seven is the Fourth Street Southeast Project, the street lighting district designation and setting the public hearing for October 9th, 2018. Number eight is the 18th Avenue Northeast Trail Gap and easement agreement to straighten out that trail. Item nine is the agreement with Canadian Pacific Railroad for utility occupancy license. Item 10 is the 2018 Improvement Program appropriation for revenue adjustments within the city's capital projects. Item 11 is the agreement with Canadian Pacific for the 26th Avenue North Street Reconstruction Project. Item 12 is the Mid-City Industrial Reconstruction Project Cooperative Agreement and Easements. Item 13 is the easement permit agreements for replacements of water main crossings at the Mississippi River. Item 14 is the North Loop Paving Project, amending the resolution for variance from state aid rules. And the final item is the fleet electrification and its memorandum of understanding, grant application, and update to the work associated with that. I move all items as submitted, Madam President.
Councilmember Reich has moved the committee report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll. Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Paul Masano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes. That carries, and the report is adopted. The next report is from the Public Safety and Emergency Management Committee, chaired by Councilmember Kano.
Well, the Public Safety has five items moving forward today. And I shall go ahead and read those. One minute. So item number one is a contract with Bracken's Consulting and Psychological Services for police employee mental health services. Item two is a grant from the Minnesota Department of Public Safety, the Office of Traffic Safety, for a DWI enforcement officer. Item number three is a redistribution of pulse oximeters from the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources to the Minneapolis Police Fire Department, excuse me. Item number four is the Minnesota Board of Firefighter Training and Education Training Academy reimbursement. And item number five is a Minnesota Board of Firefighter Training and Education Training reimbursement redistribution. Those items are being brought forward by our committee. Councilmember Kano has moved the Public Safety and Emergency Management report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Paul Masano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes. That carries, and the report is adopted. Next, we have the report from the Transportation and Public Works Committee, chaired by Councilmember Reich.
Thank you, Madam President. Committee four has 15 items today. Item one is the West Broadway Improvement Special Service District, the operating plan and budget amendments. Item two is the contract amendment with La Medien Sons for Lyndale Avenue Outfall Improvements Project. Item three is the contract amendment with Meyer Contract Incorporated for the Anderson School Improvements Project. Item four is the contract amendment with Kimley-Horn Associates for the additional professional services for the Hennepin Avenue Reconstruction Project. Item five is the contract change with LS Black Culking and Flume Cleaning Services for the Fridley Softening Plant. Item six is the contract with CDM Smith, Industrial Electrical Engineering, Plan and Design for the Fridley Softening Plant. Item seven is the Fourth Street Southeast Project, the street lighting district designation and setting the public hearing for October 9th, 2018. Number eight is the 18th Avenue Northeast Trail Gap and easement agreement to straighten out that trail. Item nine is the agreement with Canadian Pacific Railroad for utility occupancy license. Item 10 is the 2018 Improvement Program appropriation for revenue adjustments within the city's capital projects. Item 11 is the agreement with Canadian Pacific for the 26th Avenue North Street Reconstruction Project. Item 12 is the Mid-City Industrial Reconstruction Project Cooperative Agreement and Easements. Item 13 is the easement permit agreements for replacements of water main crossings at the Mississippi River. Item 14 is the North Loop Paving Project, amending the resolution for variance from state aid rules. And the final item is the fleet electrification and its memorandum of understanding, grant application, and update to the work associated with that. I move all items as submitted, Madam President.
Councilmember Reich has moved the committee report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll. Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Paul Masano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes. That carries, and the report is adopted. Next order of business is the reports of the special committees. And we have items referred to the council from the executive committee, presented by
one cycle to the council meeting on September 21st, 2018.
Thank you. So Councilmember Schrader has moved items one through three, moved to delete item four, and moved to postpone item five. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries and the report is adopted. Next, order of business is the reports of the special committees, and we have items referred to the council from the executive committee, presented by Council Vice President Jenkins.
Thank you, Madam President. The executive committee has referred three items to the city council. The first is the appointed position of the Director of Public Information in the Minneapolis Police Department. Items two and three are collective bargaining agreements with the Machinist Union and the Teamsters Convention Center Janitors Union, Unit. I move all three items for referral to the Ways and Means Committee.
Council Vice President has moved approval of the executive committee's items to be referred to Ways and Means. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries and the report is adopted. Next, we have the report from the Zoning and Planning Committee, given by the Chair Councilmember Schrader.
Thank you, Madam President. The Zoning and Planning Committee brings forward five items today. Item number one is the denial of an appeal submitted by Carvana regarding a condition of approval to a site plan and review at 1300 New Brighton Boulevard. Item number two is the denial of the rezoning application for the same project. This also includes the findings of facts which are before us today, as submitted by the city attorney's office. Item three is the approval of a rezoning application submitted by Lerner-Molto Family Communities to vacate the drainage and utility easement at 120 Fifth Street Northeast. Number four is a vacation application submitted by Project for Pride and Living. The committee deleted this item from their agenda as the project's not yet ready to move, and I'll make the same motion today. Item number five is the rezoning application submitted by Yellow Tree Corp. for a four-story residential building at 2323 Jackson Street Northeast. This item was sent forward without recommendation, and I'll move to postpone this item one cycle to our next council meeting. I move to adopt items one through three. I will also move to delete number four from the agenda, and move to postpone number five one cycle to the council meeting on September 21st, 2018.
Thank you. So Councilmember Schrader has moved items one through three, moved to delete item four, and moved to postpone item five. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries and the report is adopted. Next, order of business is the reports of the special committees, and we have items referred to the council from the executive committee, presented by Council Vice President Jenkins.
Thank you, Madam President. The executive committee has referred three items to the city council. The first is the appointed position of the Director of Public Information in the Minneapolis Police Department. Items two and three are collective bargaining agreements with the Machinist Union and the Teamsters Convention Center Janitors Union, Unit. I move all three items for referral to the Ways and Means Committee.
Council Vice President has moved approval of the executive committee's items to be referred to Ways and Means. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries and the report is adopted. Next, under the order of unfinished business, we have a proposal to amend the city charter, which would increase the limits on the city's debt for capital expenditures by permitting the combination of borrowing authority granted under the state law and city charter. This proposed amendment is presented pursuant to the provisions of Minnesota Statute, Section 410.12 subdivision 7, as an amendment by ordinance initiated by the city council. Passage of this ordinance requires the unanimous affirmative vote of the entire membership, which is why the matter was postponed to today. So I'll recognize Councilmember Johnson as the Chair of the Intergovernmental Relations Committee to present this and the recommendation on the matter.
Thank you, Madam President. Today, we bring forward this item, which was postponed at our last meeting. I'll go ahead and move the item. I will note that the language that the committee selected, the substitute language, was the language offered by the Charter Commission. And I'll stand for any questions.
Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much. I don't have a question, but I just didn't want to let this moment pass without acknowledging Scott Benson, who was a former council member, and this is one of the first problems he identified after I was elected in 2006, that was making it very difficult for the city to be able to manage and purchase and invest in our property. I certainly understand where it came from originally from the voters in terms of concerns, I think, about professional sports stadiums, actually. But it was never very effective in preventing those either, and we have other provisions to do that. And so I'm happy to support this, and I think it's not of a controversial nature at this point in time, looking at the amount and the input that we've gotten from the public. And so I'm comfortable letting the council do this with unanimous vote. And thanks, Scott Benson, for helping convince me way back in 2006.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on the item? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries unanimously, and so that ordinance is adopted. With that, we have concluded our business for the council today. Are there any announcements?
I don't see any. I will take a minute just to thank everyone again for taking the time to meet earlier this week, and many of you sent staff as well, for the first kind of big meeting with us for our new strategic plan. This time, we are incorporating race equity from the beginning in our strategic plan, incorporating it along with the Race Equity Plan. So I want to thank the Council Vice President for all of her leadership as Chair of our Race Equity Subcommittee and that important work we'll carry forward through that committee, as well as Mayor Frye for his partnership and support of taking this new approach to centering race equity in our city's overall strategic plan. And there's much more to come on that. Also, just want to thank all the staff and community members who came and did all the work to plan for the day and to participate. I thought it was really helpful. Is there any other announcements? Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to acknowledge Labor Day coming up and the celebration and honoring of the American labor movement and all the contributions it's made to the strength and prosperity of our nation.
Thank you. Okay, with that, we have concluded our business. We have a closed session, but before that, we will adjourn this, so we will adjourn our council meeting to the closed session. And then we also today have a meeting of our Minneapolis Community Development Agency. We are all commissioners of that agency, and Councilmember Goodman is the Chair. So we will move to adjourn this meeting to our closed session, and then reconvene as the MCDAs. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
On approval, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That carries, and we are adjourned. So I'll turn this over to Councilmember Goodman to chair the MCDAs Board of Commissioners meeting. And we have that agenda in front of us as well.
Good morning, and thank you, Madam President. I'm going to call together the Minneapolis Community Development Agency Board of Commissioners for what will be considered our annual meeting, which is today, August 31st. We'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Commissioner Reich.
Here.
Fletcher.
Here.
Jenkins.
Here.
Schrader.
Here.
Worsami.
Present.
Cunningham.
Present.
Ellison.
Present.
Johnson.
Here.
Palmasano.
Present.
Gordon.
Here.
Conno.